I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for the work session on Thursday, February 24th at 6:17 PM. And I will ask the councilors to do a review of the agenda as amended and items on consent. Any comments? Okay, not seeing any. Any councillor concerns? Councillor West?
You're muted. How about now?
Yep. Got it.
Perfect, thank you. I'm just bringing a concern that I've had from a couple neighbors and maybe we can discuss it further. No, you know, we need to do something right this second, but there's been some people that approached me about wanting to look at our ordinances around, these neighbors specifically, the chickens for people that don't have restricted covenants like HOAs necessarily that have an issue with it. But it looks like I reviewed some of the ordinances and there may be an instance where some of those are a little antiquated and may have been put in when we were much more of a rural community. And I know in the metro area, a lot of people want to have, you know, two, three chickens as pets and egg layers. And there's some other things that we may want to update and look at. And so I'm not saying one way or the other right now. I just thought that we might want to put that on our radar and maybe have city staff like look at what other similar cities our sites are doing that might be applicable to us and see if there's something that we might be able to do to advance that. I also think that in a bigger sense, the conversation addresses diversity, equity, inclusion issues and being culturally sensitive. A lot of people, most cultures can utilize eggs in their culture for food and it gives people the right to assist a little bit easier and a little bit more freedom in how they come about their food. So I don't know, I think that might be something that's a win-win. So that's why I bring it up. It's kind of a concern of mine because other citizens brought it to my attention.
Is, so you're talking about a number of ordinances that relate to chickens?
There's just an ordinance, a kind of a section within the code that talks, I mean, even talks about ostriches. So that's how it's, but it is kind of a code that kind of addresses like how big the yard has to be and, you know, what the rules are around it within the city limits. And I think it's something maybe we should look at and we might be willing to update or to be comparable to other cities or sites.
Given, well, thank you. I don't know what would be involved in researching other cities. Those things usually end up being pretty, pretty involved, given what our city, I know people can have chickens. Of course, tonight, we have, we're not going to review the ordinance or anything like that. I would like to, I don't know, I don't know the scope of this kind of a review and study. We'd have to look at other cities. And what do we have time for within the council goals that we have set up for our staff to accomplish right now?
I don't know if Brian wants to say what it might entail. He would know better than us. But I just know that the yard requirement is pretty massive, that it really excludes everybody without, even though we may be able to have, because I've read it, if we may be able to have or not have it. I think, I don't know if anybody else is interested in maybe just having, looking at it, discussing it further. That's all I'm proposing. It's a concern that I'm conveying.
Perhaps a preliminary review of the scope.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need to have some kind of a way of determining the scale of the project that we give to the staff. Because I, you know, I wouldn't want to, let's find out what, maybe you could do a little bit more research and get that to the city manager and they could, they could advise. Do they have time for this in this quarter, next year, whatever? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have any either.
That's my only concern. I know without looking at the ordinance, I just want to, I don't know the scale of the project to review what other cities have and what our yard size is. Any other comments? Okay, let's just find out a little bit more.
Good approach. We'll look at it, see how much time it would take.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to our pre-council work session. We're ready to start talking about the vertical housing development zones.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and City Council. I'm going to take a moment here and share my screen to pull up some slides. Just one moment. All right. Everybody can see the slide?
Yes.
Perfect. Hey, I am Kim Reddell, as I mentioned, senior planner with the city and I'm excited to give to you tonight the city's economic development manager, Matt Lorenzen, who is helping out on the staff side with this effort, as well as we have tonight with us Becky Hewitt of Echo Northwest, who has been working with us throughout this process to present to you some draft local criteria for the city's proposed vertical housing development zone program in Town Center and the Villebois Village Center. So we last discussed this topic with you in November, where we gathered your feedback on the types of local criteria that you would like to see included to help ensure that publicly accessible ground floor spaces are created through this tax abatement program. In combination with state statute requirements and the geography of the zone, local criteria determine a project eligibility for VHDV. The goal for our work session tonight is to present the draft criteria, which have been included in your packet, to ensure that they capture your prior feedback. This is our final step prior to beginning the process for adopting a VHDV program. So based on your confirmation of these draft criteria, we anticipate bringing forward a resolution to adopt a VHDV program in May. Just as a quick refresher, vertical housing offers a partial property tax exemption on building a proven value for mixed-use developments that include housing and non-residential uses on the ground floor. The amount of the tax exemption increases based on the number of residential floors above the ground floor of the project. This partial abatement lasts for a period of 10 years, beginning in the first year when the project is occupied or ready for occupancy. Let me go back. To be eligible for this abatement for the state statute, 50% of the ground floor space that is fronting on the primary public street has to be committed to non-residential use. And so for our purposes in the state statute, this is defined as spaces constructed to building code standards for commercial use or spaces that are planned for commercial use upon project completion. So based on your prior input, the goal of the draft local criteria is ensuring the creation of spaces in eligible projects that are accessible to the public for commercial or communities serving purposes. So as our team developed the draft criteria, we were mindful of the fact that this vertical housing tax abatement and local criteria that we developed to go with it are not intended to regulate development. That is the role of the comprehensive plan and development code that we have to implement some of our city decisions. Rather, this program and the local criteria are intended to incentivize the creation of ground floor, commercial and community spaces consistent with these adopted plans and codes. So I just want to highlight some key points about the criteria and how they will build upon the minimum statutory requirements for the program to meet your goals for this abatement. So first, the criteria requires direct street access for eligible non-residential spaces. And we've put this in there to ensure that there is that easy public accessibility from the street frontage. The criteria also require application of commercial and mixed-use design standards that we have in adopted master plans in the development code. So for instance, in Town Center, there are some standards that apply to commercial mixed-use development in the code and you would want to see those provided on the ground floor. This helps to ensure that the ground floor of the buildings has an exterior design and appearance that supports public access. Next, we have criteria around ground floor common areas, such as lobbies and fitness rooms that are often found in residential buildings, that specifically exclude these spaces from the calculation of the 50% non-residential use. This is because these spaces are typically designed exclusively for the use of residents of the building and their guests and are not meeting that publicly accessible standard that you're interested in. The criteria also includes specificity as to what counts as a live-work space for the purpose of meeting the minimum non-residential area requirement. So we've defined this further to state that these spaces must have direct access to the street and that the portion of the unit that is designed for the non-residential use must be adjacent to the street entrance. Additionally, these units must be designed so that the non-residential portion of the unit is or can be separated from the residential portion of the unit. Each building in the project should have at least one non-residential tenant space that is not a live-work unit. We decided to go this path instead of having a ratio percentage, just because there might be some variability in the size of buildings. And we wanted to ensure that we have an allowance for a range of users, including traditional retail users or other publicly accessible uses that will serve the community at large. So we're not specifying a minimum square footage for these spaces, but instead allowing for our zoning requirements, the market and developers to determine how these spaces can be best accommodated in a project. Lastly, our final criteria requires consistency with adopted plans for the applicable area. And this is intended to allow staff of discretion to look at a project and just make sure that it's not only meeting our standards for vertical housing, but that it's also consistent with the adopted plans and policies for the area. So with that, tonight, the project team seeks your confirmation that the city should move forward with the draft local criteria that we've included in your packet as part of the city's vertical housing development zone program. We're happy to answer any questions you have about the criteria or the project implementation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Looking for the hands raised, Council President Akervol.
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. This was helpful to get the little refresher and then also some of the questions that I remember we had last time are coming back with further detail and clarification around them. So I appreciate, you know, seeing that process kind of work through. I guess this is a nice view because we can all see each other's faces. So you don't have to put up the last slide, but I think that the last one that we talked to, or that you discussed was, had the point about at least one unit is not one of these live-work. And I think my question is around how do these live-work spaces, how are those working out possibly in other buildings that have been designed and are actually being occupied now? My concern is, I wonder if there's, if there's just one that is not the live-work, could this have a potential of creating like a little island or something where they don't have the energy of other businesses around them because maybe at that point in time they're being the live instead of the live-work? And then it's hard for them to get, you know, like that, that traction and energy because they're, they're isolated. Has that occurred in other instances? Is that something that we should be concerned about or have reason to be concerned about? It just popped into my mind and I wondered if, if you had any perspective to share on that.
Sure. Maybe I'll start on this and then Becky, if you have anything you want to add or Matt, feel free. One of the things we did when we started looking at how exactly to go about defining this was we, we realized we, we got to a point in this process where we had the benefit of an approved project that falls within one of these areas, being the project in the Villebois Village Center. And so we had something to kind of look at and see how, how a floor plan, at least what they had presented at the time to the DRB and what they approved, we had the benefit of looking at how that floor plan was laid out and how some of the spaces were configured with the live-work relative to the retail spaces. We found that this was a pattern that was generally consistent with that project that we approved. And a lot of that, I think particularly with Villebois, some of the discussion around the Village Center had to do with, you know, how much, how much retail market can a project of that size support? So we felt like that was a good on-the-ground case study for us to use as a starting point. I want to say that the spaces in there range, I think the smallest one is around 1,300 square feet. So it occupies a decent amount of the frontage on a corner, actually. So it's going to, you know, be visible from both sides. And so I think, you know, from the perspective of trying to balance some of the challenges that we know exist in Villebois, with wanting to have those retail spaces, but also recognizing that it might take a little bit of time for the market to catch up, we felt that this was an approach that really struck a good balance there. And so I guess I'll turn it, you know, that's kind of the methodology behind it. I'll turn it over to Becky and/or Matt, if you've got some examples of how live-work units in other places maybe have been integrated with retail?
Matt, feel free to chime in if you've got examples in mind as well. I'm thinking about, for example, the, what used to be called the Ryde Old Town in Beaverton, it's now called West Line. But that's a building that has, something like this, has like one true retail space, I think, and then the rest are live-work spaces. That retail space maybe is not like the most desirable retail space in Beaverton, but also I think if they had tried to fill all the rest of it with retail space, I'm not sure it would have been better. I think that if you have a situation where the market is there for the retail space, then you'll get a solid ground floor and this won't be an issue. And if the market isn't really there for the retail space, it's really a question of, are you trying to force that space in and it may not be leased and it may sit vacant? Or are you allowing the flexibility through live-work for there to be something happening in that space? And if the market does come through over time, that that space can, can convert and businesses can come in. So my sense is that if the developer thinks they can make a go of a really, you know, bigger retail presence, if they think that the conditions are right, La Scala in Beaverton has like a food hall on the ground floor and it's like a bigger retail presence and very vibrant. And that's great, but that doesn't necessarily work everywhere. And so I think if, if you allow the flexibility that if they think they can do it, they have that path. And if they don't think they can make it work, then they can give you something that's a standalone commercial or community space and then have that flexibility over time for other spaces to contribute and become more retail oriented as the market changes. Matt, did you want to add anything or do you have any examples that you are thinking of?
Yeah, thanks. So first, hello to you all. Nice to see you and meet you. I've been on board for almost two months and it's been great so far. So I'll leave it at that. So I just would reiterate what Becky said, actually. I jotted down a couple of things here. The requirement of the statutes is that this ground floor be constructed to commercial standards, even if it's not used completely as such right from certificate of occupancy. So that allows the building to be flexible to market demands over time. And I believe that flexibility is what you want and that kind of leads me to my second point. I'll share anecdotally that in my past work experience with Main Street programming and downtown revitalization work, oftentimes communities say, gosh, we wish we had more retail downtown, or we wish we had more restaurants downtown, or we wish we had more retail and restaurants, instead of say, the lawyer's office, or the bookkeeper's office, or the XYZ professional services that doesn't generate that same kind of cultural vibe that many people want. And so they go about writing ordinances that create some sort of prohibition against professional services, hoping that they'll then be filled in with restaurants and retail. And oftentimes, unfortunately, what happens in those situations is that instead of getting more restaurants and retail, they get more vacancy. So this flexibility, I believe, is desirable and we, I do think we want a minimum standard and I think we've created that by requiring the one exclusively commercial space. But otherwise, we'll leave it up to the market, to the zoning code and to the developers themselves to determine what is viable in a given area. Certainly Villebois and Town Center are two very different areas and so that flexibility will be beneficial in that regard as well, in that the context will determine as how these properties are utilized. Thanks.
I was just going to comment that in reading the materials, I think what I took out of it was that you, this is like, and I, I'm seeing this, it seems to be the best solution because we, we have to have a certain amount of retail. We want a live-work and we don't want to make it so complicated and so variable that we end up with, it looked like there could be a risk if we, if we try to go with a percentage of, of non, non-live-work. You just asked for one unit of non-live, of strictly, strictly commercial and you let, depending on, maybe there's, for example, I was thinking about in Villebois, Philip's Center, there's not a big parking lot like you find in some other places. And so a developer is going to think about what kind of business can that draw up and put traffic and people who live there. Whereas if you're over at Town Center, you're going to attract people, more, more people from the outside who are driving in. And they, they may choose what type of scale of commercial they want. Any other questions about the, the reasons that they've come up with these draft local criteria? And basically, we're looking at this draft local criteria and giving, giving them some response. Looks like we, we've talked about it quite a bit. Maybe you've hit the mark.
Yeah. I, I thought it sounded very good. I'm very impressed, I think.
You're welcome.
The only thing I would say with regards to Town Center, I'll just be a broken record here. I'd really like to encourage it going higher, you know?
Understood. And I think that's where-
Three stories is like so suburban. It's just so, it's so not, and you ought to go up into one of our taller buildings, the Flair Building or something, and look at the views that you could have, or a rooftop restaurant or something spectacular. Anyway, I'd like to keep-
Well, let the record show that we want, show that we again want more verticals.
Right, right. It doesn't have to be 15 stories, just four or five will get you a huge amount of view.
I guess the other, oh, go ahead. I would agree. I would agree with Councillor Leehan. I also thought that this, having one unit that is, that is strictly commercial, that doesn't have the live-work, gives some, probably helps attract a certain business that does not want the live space. So it gives that flexibility. Councillor West, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, is this, we've, I'm hoping, my hope, and I don't know if I totally grasp it yet, is we've just seen, and I talk to the Villebois neighbors about it all the time, I'm sure Mayor Fitzgerald has and so has Council President Akervol, like, why are those businesses still empty by the piazza? And how are those going to get filled? It's been that way since the origins of Villebois. Are we, are, like, is this unique enough and strategic enough to hopefully overcome? Maybe it's a market situation, we're just talking to the fix here. But I'm hoping like how we are doing this is maybe going to solve that conundrum in Villebois where we don't have vacant commercial spaces for a decade. And I know there's some uniqueness because we're allowing that, that live-work space kind of combination, which I think is very forward thinking with some of where the market's going now, that we, more people work from home and stuff, or they want to live where they work also and have that combination piece going on. I don't know if we have the ability, I don't know, or the time to speak to if this is hopefully going to also solve that issue. What are your thoughts are about that?
I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Becky and Matt for some insight. You know, I think the one thing that, you know, the abatement was intended to solve, I think, some of the market challenges and allowing for, or getting a project a pencil in this type of context and suburban context and getting the spaces created. So that's really kind of our key emphasis. But you're, you're totally right, there's a whole nother piece to it. And I know Becky has given us in some prior presentations, some information about different tools that can help overcome that, that other gap that sometimes exists. You know, I think certainly while separate from this abatement, those might be programs or tools that are worth your consideration and thought in the future, particularly as these spaces are created and come online. I'm sure, you know, Matt, as you're getting the speed plot, is going to chew on some of these, these challenges that have come up and will probably have several ideas. So to Matt, I don't know if there's anything you want to add on that, your thoughts on that right now? Or Becky, if you have any further thoughts? I'll start with Matt.
Yeah, I'm interested in Becky's thoughts as she gets exposure to a lot more communities in her role as a consultant. Can we solve the vacancy in Villebois with this incentive program? Frankly, I don't think so, but that doesn't mean that it's unsolvable. I just don't know that it's this program that gets at that particular issue.
Can I ask you a question with that comment, just quick?
Sure.
Are we creating a situation potentially where we're just going to have, we've finally finished Villebois, but we're creating more, we really are just creating a lot more commercial vacant spaces around the bottom that are likely to not be filled? Are we creating, like solving one problem while creating another at the same time?
I think that's a fair question, but I believe the way we've structured this program minimizes that possibility. For example, if we were to have written some rules that said that you had to have 2,500 square feet or 75% or however we decided to do it, I believe that would put us in a situation where vacancy would be much more likely. The way we've written it is to say that, just give us one space of commercial and configure the rest how you believe the market can support it.
There's a lot of freedom.
I would add, and Becky, you might have some other thoughts. I think one thing to remember is that, you know, obviously, everybody in this virtual room is invested in seeing Villebois build out. I think, you know, there's, there's a vision that's there too about having, having this, this space with activity and a place for the community to go and have some, you know, commercial and/or community-serving spaces. And I think, you know, having this in place still allows us to be achieving that piece of the vision as well. And I think that's really important. And it might be that there is additional effort that needs to happen to ensure that that whole vision is achieved. What this abatement does is at least create, create the feasibility for the spaces to be put in place that then allows the city for, you know, allows us to achieve the whole vision for the Village Center.
One question I had, and maybe, maybe this is for Becky and, or anyone, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Leehan, I just saw your hand. But you had mentioned, Kim, a couple minutes ago, the tool. And I think, I just wanted to revisit that. This- tool, and I think, I just wanted to revisit that, this program was building this vertical housing zone, was helping to make it possible to build these residential buildings here. And then the second challenge is some other incentives that would be structured in some other way from another set of sources of grants and incentives to help incent certain businesses, like, can somebody talk about, because we touched on that before, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, and then Councilor Leehan can have her hand up.
Yeah, I'm sure Matt has ideas here as well, but that is, as Kim mentioned, that's something that we noted early on in response to some of council's goals and desires for the Villebois Village Center, that vertical housing development zones can get the building built with space in it that can serve, you know, can accommodate a business, but it doesn't get a business in the door, and it doesn't make a business viable. And so there are tools that you could use that might reduce the cost of a business coming in the door, and that might make it easier, you know, given that the market, we did some market analysis for the Villebois Village Center, it showed that it's kind of tough, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of people coming to and through that area, it's a kind of a limited draw, but that, if you can lower kind of the barriers to entry to that space, that can help make it easier for a small business, or somebody who kind of just like wants to do the thing, and they're like, not sure they have a viable business yet, but they want to make a go of it, that might be the best business that you could get in that space. It helps reduce the barriers to those kind of businesses coming in. So I think those kind of grants or loans that help people get the space ready to move in, and reduce their kind of move-in costs, those can be really helpful in some cases. And then, you know, I think with more people working at home now, you might see that, you know, you've got a little more daytime population, again, if you can lower some of those barriers, you might start to see some small things work. And so I think the way the criteria is structured, as Matt said, it gives you that flexibility to, you know, have those live-work spaces be part of the solution, and get some small spaces in there. I think, you know, if you don't offer anything else to help get businesses into these spaces, the availability of more space doesn't necessarily help the situation, especially if those spaces aren't all managed by the same company, so they can't do a sort of comprehensive teneting strategy that's like, oh, I'll put this one in this space, and this will be really complimentary, and those will go together, and I'll like get a good vibe going. They're not all managed by the same company, and so I think that speaks to just, you know, trying to help get something in the door, and let that help build a little momentum that helps fill the other spaces. So I think once you get one or two filled with something you like, you might see the rest kind of come along, but it's getting, it's getting something going there that I think is going to be the biggest hurdle, and reducing the barriers to that is something that the city could help with. Matt, did you have anything you want to add from your experience?
Sure. Yeah, I think the point is well made, that adding more space doesn't increase the likelihood, at least intuitively, of currently existing space filling up. But I would also maybe argue that a commercial district, in order to be viable, needs a certain critical mass, and, you know, one or two loan establishments may kind of wither, but with a critical mass of complementary businesses, I think they've got to go at it. So that's just one thing to consider. I'm not necessarily saying that that's the inevitable outcome here, but that's just a possibility that you might consider. I think one thing that I'm learning from this meeting, which I'm appreciating, is that there's an opportunity to convene these property owners and their representatives to try and formulate a more comprehensive teneting strategy. I'd be happy to look into that and take that on. And then as far as specific ideas of how we might lower these barriers, two things that are commonly done are rent subsidies, to, again, help lower those initial startup costs of getting a business up off the ground. That could be structured any number of ways. And then, one thing I've used previously in my work is a tenant improvement grant or loan. So someone may be a very skilled business operator, but having the capital and the know-how of how to fit out a space from a vanilla shell into a properly improved commercial space are two different skill sets, and so we can help with technical assistance as well as funding in getting a space from vanilla shell to fitted the way it needs to be to operate a viable business.
Thank you. Councilor Lindell, or Leehan, excuse me. And wait, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to add a couple of comments around this conversation. I guess we're talking, I thought we were talking mostly about Town Center, vertical housing, but I guess also Villebois. It just, I think those are two entirely different places that have entirely different challenges. And if you, but a lot of what's been said, certainly about Villebois, is true, and has always been true also of Charbonneau's Village Center. They have been challenged from the get-go, and having done Charbonneau before we did Villebois, we kind of knew what we were stepping into, because the initial recommendations from commercial developers were that we needed to essentially abandon twos, and run twos right into the Village Center, and all the way down to Wilsonville Road, to the Newburgh Road, where the school is now, through Graham Oaks. And the decision was made to not do that, because what you need is critical mass or traffic, and understanding that Villebois the way it is, to make it attractive as a community, then you didn't want all that traffic running through it on its way to Newburgh. From Sherwood to Newburgh, we were essentially, they were essentially saying, if you really want a good commercial center here, this is what you need to do. And we were not willing to do that for a number of reasons, because of Graham Oaks, because of what it would do to the neighborhood at Villebois. So it always has, but it was a conscious decision that we would then have to be looking at these other things, something else to incentivize it, something else to overcome that, but it's not like we didn't know from the get-go that that was going to be a challenge, and really very different than Town Center. Town Center, we were advised, you know, after it had been built, because I came in late on that thing, but that we needed more, either residents or offices. That Town Center needed more, you know, more density in terms of residence or office buildings that would create the density or the mass that you needed to support the commercial. And then Wilsonville, of course, is also challenged by having so many different commercial places, from Argyle to Fred Meyer's to, you know, Town Center, that makes it hard to support these Village Centers, Charbonneau or Villebois, but it just means that we have to look very seriously at these kind of incentives to get businesses going in those areas.
We have to work extra hard. Thank you, and I'm-
But they were reasonable choices, is what I'm saying. I mean, they were, people made those choices on behalf of the community, on the values of the community, so.
Thank you. And we're about to wrap up. I'd like to hear from Councilor Lindell, and then we do need to give kind of a thumbs up, or wrap our opinion here. So thank you, Councilor Lindell. For your-
Thank you. And thanks for the, all of the feedback. I've been listening and recalling our initial discussions, and I thought Councilor Leehan was going to take the words right out of my mouth in terms of, about the differences between Villebois and Town Center. And my only question, and I don't have the answer to this, is that we are, it appears we are trying to overlay a single criterion-based policy for two different areas that are substantively different. And my question is, is that approach going to be beneficial to what we envision in Town Center? I understand what we're doing in terms of Villebois, and how we really can't, I mean, we probably are not going to want to have those vacant spaces, additional vacant spaces. I'm not envisioning that in Town Center we're going to have those, because we are already pretty retail-oriented down there, and I think our vision, even in what we've done in the Town Center plan, envisions really quite a bit of commercial. So my question is just, are we, does the criteria, as we're looking at it right now, get us to where we really want to be in Town Center, or does it kind of squash our vision a little bit in terms of what we hope to accomplish there? So, and I don't have the answer to that. And I don't have an answer to whether we would really, it would be beneficial to have two different kinds of, you know, criterion. So that's just a concern.
Do I recall that we decided, thank you for that, that we were advised, decided we needed a uniform decision for our vertical housing in Wilsonville, and that this is supposed to be that way?
Yes, that is correct. Typically, there's one set of a local criteria, and the bulk of the eligibility is determined by the state statute, so we're just adding on some things just to really tailor it to our needs. I would note that, you know, we, just briefly, that we tried to structure this in a way that wasn't conflicting with our adopted plans and codes, which is really what's going to help shape what you see in Town Center. This tool really is just meant to try to make it more financially viable for somebody to come in and implement the vision that we've already adopted in the Town Center. So I really think that the policies and the goals and the regulations that we adopted with the Town Center plan are going to shape what you see in Town Center, which corruptly is inherently different than the Villebois Village Center.
So hearing all of that, and all of these great different points and considerations, so, Councilor Leehan, are you raising your hand again?
I just add one, one real quick comment. I wanted to agree with what Ms. Ewitt said regarding the change that's underway post-pandemic. So I think we have to be cognizant and aware that a lot of the way people live and work is shifting, and we can't really predict how that will be, but it will, there will be some beneficial parts, and neighborhood commercial may be one of those that benefits from it. Our travel patterns are changing, and our living and working patterns are changing, and it's something to keep in mind going forward. We can't just assume it's business as usual.
That's a great point. We are, things have changed three or four times dramatically since Town Center was conceived the first time. So with that, I would like to ask, I think, Kim, if you'd like to wrap this up, to see if you have what you need, or do you want a more direct question?
I have not heard any feedback that indicates a desire to make any amendments or changes to what is in the local criteria that we put forward in the pocket. So having not heard that, unless somebody wants to speak up and say otherwise, I feel comfortable with moving forward and bringing this back to you all for adoption in May.
All right. I see nodding, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene in seven minutes at 7:10 for the regular meeting. Work session is adjourned. Thank you. Work session is adjourned. Thank you. Mr. Cogswrue, are we ready with the audiovisual?
We are.
I will call the order, meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for the regular session on Thursday, February 24th at 7:12 PM. Will the city reporter please call the roll?
Counselor Linville?
I'm here.
Counselor West?
Here.
Counsel President Ockerwald?
Here.
Counselor Leahan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Thank you. Will the city attorney, city manager please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the following order of the agenda as amended?
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the order of agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been roundly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. We're all fully, fully in agreement there. So, I'll move to mayor's business. And we'll start out by saying that over the past couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to have a lot of interviews. They were all on Zoom with people who expressed interest in serving on the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission and also on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And as usual, it's just a really great opportunity to hear from people living in our community who are very interested in volunteering and serving. And just, it's, it's a great experience. And we, we are, as usual, lucky to have a lot of interest from a variety of people. And there was a lot, great deal of background and diversity in their interest and experience and all kinds of things. So, I look forward to tonight. We are, you will see that I have recommended a motion to appoint nine voting members of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission and also one person to the Parks and Recreation Board. And we'll hear about that a little bit later. Today, the city had the great fun honor of being the site of a meeting of Greater Portland, Inc. And that is a group that we are a member of. It's an economic development group that serves the whole Greater Portland area. And they chose to have their first meeting looking at climate smart industries here in Wilsonville. And Counselor Linville was there. Our Economic Development Manager, Matt Lorenzen, was there. And lots of other people, basically as many as they could, they decided it would be smart to, to tour that, the facility, which was called ESS Energy Storage Solutions. And it is, I encourage you to look it up and read more about it. It's been a very successful company that started, basically, in the Portland area in, in some very smart people's garage. And it's quickly grown through some economic development and seed fund, angel investing over the years. And they developed batteries that are, it's called a flow battery using iron instead of lithium and other toxic metals. And they are a gigantic battery. They store power to the size of a small semi truck. There's a lot to learn about it. We also had some presentations by, by a panel from PGE and others who discussed energy storage. So, basically, in states like California where they have a lot of solar power, we have some wind power here. And you get to the place where you don't need that power in any one day and you lose it. With this technology, which is being used all around the world, they, they will be able to capture that power and use it later. This facility is located on the former Xerox campus. And I think they are on their third expansion in one of those buildings. And the city hosted a luncheon after the tour in the nearby Parkway Woods Tech Campus to discuss economic development issues. So, it was a great opportunity. And we've had some other tours of Wilsonville recently. I had the opportunity recently to host Metro Counselor Garrett Rosenthal. And we looked at various aspects of Wilsonville. Counselor Rosenthal is assigned to Wilsonville. We are in his district. And it was a good opportunity to look at some of our transportation areas, our industrial development areas. We, we were in Charbonneau, looked at their retail area that we discussed earlier in the meeting. And, and also, just really toured all around Wilsonville. And I think that he really appreciated that chance to meet with some local people and see what the opportunities and challenges are for Wilsonville for which we could use his help. And one of our big topics of discussion was transportation and our need to expand, make that Boone Bridge more passable and seismically resilient. We also had a tour of Plaquemines, tour of the area with Plaquemines County Commissioner Paul Savis. And we, we probably covered a little bit more ground with him. Also spent some time at the West Station. And I just really appreciate both of them taking time to really look at our city. I will say also, Plaquemines County Commissioner Savis, Paul Savis, was also there with us today at the tour of ESS and had lunch with us and appreciated his attention to all of the things that we are working on in Wilsonville and in Plaquemines County. This is a time to just report on some of the meetings that, that I go to. And you'll hear later from the other councilors on ways they have been representing Wilsonville in the region. Some of the ones that I attended really focused on the fact that we are in both Plaquemines County and Washington County. So, we meet with mayors in both of those areas. We also have some meetings to attend in a metro subcommittee of Plaquemines Cities, often related to transportation. And I'm, I know that Counselor Linville attends some of those for Plaquemines County. And I'm just going to let her report on that, which she would. So, I'm not, not saying the same thing. A lot of it relates to moving traffic and the ODOT's I-205 toll program and regional congestion pricing program, which we continue to be very vocal and present in. The, the other big meeting that I went to that was, was very informative was the French Prairie Forum. And that is smaller cities, including Wilsonville, in the French Prairie era, which is often described as Oregon's red basket. We heard about agriculture, the new leader for agricultural experiment station with Oregon State University will be coming on soon. And we also talked about housing and transportation in the area and ways we can all work to improve that. You may recall that at our last council meeting, I discussed issues of concern by Wilsonville and other areas, cities in the area about the I-205 toll programs. And at the February meeting of the Plaquemines County Coordinating Committee, which is really the cities in Plaquemines County, that committee decided to reissue a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission with more specific requests about how, if they are going to do tolling and congestion pricing, we want to be heard on some of the matters that I think Counselor Linville will discuss. I also personally, or in representation of Wilsonville, that was, that was really the C4 cities. We also had a letter of testimony that we circulated to the councilors, to the Oregon Transportation Commission on the same subject. And I testified before the commission as well. As we all know, the Oregon Legislature is in session for the short session. The city, with the League of Oregon Cities and the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, have all been busy reviewing this proposed legislation. I've talked a couple of times with Representative Courtney Neuron about some of these things. And we're considering testimony on potential bills to be heard in House and Senate committees. The city did testify on proposed legislation modifying the current, what they call substantial completion law. And that determines when and how housing development is substantially complete and when occupancy permits should be issued. And this is a proposal that the city found is unnecessary and that it, because it carries potential unintended consequences that we found could be detrimental to both local governments and new homeowners. The amended bill now clarifies that public improvements and conditions of development of a local government may require an assessment of substantial completion prior to land use approval of a residential subdivision. So, the bill also creates a study group consisting of local government and housing industry representatives to analyze the administrative procedures for approving residential construction projects. It would, it would study identifying best practices and proposed regulatory changes necessary to reduce project approval time and increase residential construction. The city also testified in opposition to an urban growth boundary expansion bill and a proposed task force that would be a waste of taxpayer resources by focusing on the wrong issues for cities. We already have a lot going in these areas. We, we find this bill would just do nothing to help cities to develop the housing and industrial sites that we're already working on. So, upcoming meeting, I will mention Counselor Leahan. And I will, I should let you talk about this. But I know you're, I believe, going with development, Community Development Director Chris Namsoo to the Aurora State Master Plan Advisory Committee on March 1st. And members of the public are welcome to observe and provide comments at that meeting. It's March 1st, 3:00 to 5:00 PM on Zoom. And I believe we will have that noted on our website. And you can also find that on the website of the Aurora State Airport. After the PAC meeting, which the Aviation Department is hosting a virtual Aurora State Master Plan Public Open House. It's the first one. And it will be Tuesday, March 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And links for both those meetings are available on the city website. The big project we were working on this afternoon that's part of an ongoing area of focus for us is to conduct interviews for a city attorney because our city attorney, Barbara Jacobson, is retiring, going on to other things this spring. And thanks to her quality legal work over the past several years, Ms. Jacobson has done so much for the city. She has defended public interests of the city in multiple forums and been very successful. I want to say that Ms. Jacobson's latest victory was confirmed by the Oregon Supreme Court, which agreed that the Oregon Department of Aviation violated Oregon's public process of land use laws. So, I, I just received a note from one of our citizens who said we're going to have, in so many words, very big shoes to fill in replacing the expertise of Barbara Jacobson as our city attorney. We are taking on that challenge. And we are interviewing applicants to serve as the city attorney. And we'll continue to work on them the next month or two. We'll keep you posted. So, we'll have other opportunities to thank Ms. Jacobson. But I just want to say again, we have been very lucky in Wilsonville to have her as our city attorney and wish her well in her retirement when it starts later in the spring. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 7th. At this point, my last point on the mayor's business is we would like to move to the motion I have provided to, in writing, to Council President Ockerwald regarding the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start with these motions for the positions that Mayor Fitzgerald just explained. So, first, I move to ratify the appointment of David Altman, Elaine White, Angela Sims, to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission for a term beginning February 24th, 2022, to June 30th, 2023.
Second? All in favor? Raise your hand. Raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And next, I move to ratify the appointment of Stephen Tro, Joan Carlson, and Jason Jones, to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission for a term beginning February 24th, 2022, to June 30th, 2024.
Motion's been moved in seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
And then I move to ratify the appointment of Benjamin Metford, Susan Schenk, and Deborah Zundel, to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission for a term beginning February 24th, 2022, to June 30th, 2025.
Motion's been moved in seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
Those motions allowed for the Stegert terms for that commission, of course. And then we have a motion for Parks and Rec Board, and I move to ratify the appointment of Amanda Harmon to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term beginning February 24th, 2022, to December 31st, 2024.
Motion's been moved in seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Council President Ockerbo. And that brings us to the Communications section of our agenda, and we are going to
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Maria Horton, and I am the bilingual family engagement specialist for the Westland Wilsonville School District Family Empowerment Center.
Caitlin?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Sullivan, and I am the Community Services Coordinator for the Westland Wilsonville School District.
And my name is Andrew Kelstrom, and I'm the Director of Communications for the Westland Wilsonville School District. Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald and Council, for inviting us to speak to you tonight. Our goal is to share a little bit about our new Family Empowerment Center, the work that we've done the past several months, and then what our plans are for the future. So the Family Empowerment Center is actually something that our district has been thinking about for quite a while, but it became especially urgent when the pandemic hit in the spring of 2020. We saw a need within our Westland Wilsonville School community and decided that the time was now to create a center that all of our families could utilize. And so our representative group of Westland Wilsonville staff met to begin a conversation around what that might look like. It was very clear from those conversations right away that we needed a centralized space and a physical presence where we could connect with families, the families could connect with us, we could give them the resources that they need, and we could empower families and students in their educational journey. And so out of that, the Family Empowerment Center was born, and it quickly evolved since launching in October of 2020, when we actually held our kickoff event at Wilsonville High School. So that permanent location, like I mentioned, is at Wilsonville High School, and Maria Horton, who you'll hear from in a bit here, really has established that location and really turned it into something special in a short period of time. The Family Empowerment Center represents a collaborative effort among our entire district. It's not just Maria or Caitlin, but really it's our entire school system that has made it successful in its early months. So it's a collaboration between our teachers, our councilors, our office staff, our administrators, families and community partners, ensuring that we understand what our families need and how we can best meet those needs. So initially, we focused on curating resources for students, right? Getting them what they needed during the pandemic, whether that was school supplies, clothing, food, other necessities. But we knew all along that our core mission and really our goal was to focus on that empowerment piece, which Maria will touch on in a bit here. We knew that we wanted families to learn the skills and get the tools they need to advocate for their children's educations far into the future. And then lastly, we want to share with Council tonight how the Family Empowerment Center plans to incorporate our community partners. We know how much expertise, knowledge, access to resources, and desire there is within Wilsonville to help, you know, our community members, help one another. So we're excited to partner with organizations to bring that to our families and students. So with that, I will turn it over to Maria Horton, who has spearheaded our efforts, is really the face of the Family Empowerment Center. She's the one who meets and interacts with our families on a daily basis. So Maria.
Thank you. Empower families, resulting in empower students. We have seen that how the environment at home affect our students' response in schools. We know that when they feel safe at home, their needs are met, they'll feel well and ready to learn at school. We know that when families participate in their lives, in the kids' lives, schools, kids feel, and the families as well, get a sense of belonging and a part of a community. We also know that our community is diverse, and as such, we learn from them, but we also want to share that knowledge, that enrichment, that enrichment of culture. A lot of our parents as well are trying to navigate the different systems that our school has in place to communicate between staff, teachers, and themselves, and so forth. This is complicated for them, but, you know, little by little. We want the FEC to be a partner, a collaborator with the organizations in our community and the community as well, to help, and also parents, through all of that, through all of that learning and that sense of belonging and involvement, feel more of a partner towards their children's learning. Andrew's next. As we move towards our goal and vision about empowering families to become advocates of their children's education through a cultural, holistic, responsive approach, we have also taken onto account that we are starting. We are learning, and we are approaching ideas, listening to other organizations. We have met with different of them, either they are part of an independent nonprofit organization that somehow has a involvement with a school district. Sometimes these organizations are within the school district. And all of these have also helped us to be part of inspiration and see exactly where our work, our collaboration is going to fit in within our own Westland Wilsonville
So the FEC has recently implemented workshops focusing on computer systems to help families within the district. Since a large amount of learning is done virtually, we thought it would be beneficial to host classes that could help parents within the community learn to use programs associated with their children's education. We focused on assisting with basic Microsoft programs as well as ParentView, which allows parents to enroll and register their students online. During these workshops, resources are also provided to families regarding like public services in Clackamas County and throughout Oregon. The Community Services Department within the district oversees all the space availability to host these workshops and makes sure that everything is within guidelines related to COVID-19. Next slide, please, Andrew. Thank you. Our school district guides us with a compelling vision question. How do we create learning communities for the greatest thinkers and most thoughtful people for the world? As our Superintendent Dr. Ludwig has mentioned, this question challenges us to continually hone our practices and skills in creating exceptional learning environments for our students. The question also challenges us to implement practices that help our students grow as thoughtful citizens and compassionate humanitarians. The FEC has currently started hosting internships with high school students throughout the district. These students interact with different district departments, in which they have to follow certain guidelines and curriculum, and in exchange, they receive college credits for their internship. We also have school clubs throughout the district, like the Honor Society and Leadership Team, that participate in diverse activities that will help all of their communities.
Righty. So as you can see, through all this time, we have had different organizations collaborating already with the Family Empowerment Center. This has been a great opportunity for us and has given us the opportunity to also learn from our parents. And as we collaborate with these organizations, we also have had, you know, like the Wilsonville Library has collaborated with us in our open houses and different activities, as usual. With our SMART, SMART in Wilsonville, we have, we're planning on a educational trip to have our parents get more comfortable to use the transportation systems and, you know, learn some tips and some ideas on how to communicate with the drivers and how to see, how to get to different places. We do, from a few years back, have a collaboration, a partnership with the Clackamas, the ODHS, Oregon Department of Human Services, Clackamas County, with a family coach. And through these partnerships, we've been able to help not only members of the city of Wilsonville, but also our families more directly, and they're in close proximity and not, you know, away at a distance, so that it's more accessible to them. Andrew? So we're looking forward to grow, to learn, to collaborate. This is our little picture of our office, where I'm located right now. And we are definitely are growing this space, and we are hoping that once the new primary school is built, we will be able to move to the portables behind the school at Beckman Creek, and we will have a dedicated space for our center. This will hopefully make available the more collaboration between the organizations and the Family Empowerment Center. We'll have on site our DHS person, right now, which is, she's located at Meriden Creek Middle School. And this will also give more opportunities for community members and businesses to volunteer, because then we will have dedicated spaces for our workshops and especially for that, right? Our internships and our partnerships with the high school students will increase through that, and as we get more spaces, our annual events will become more established and as well as continue supporting our community through our schools and school counselors and social workers by having on site, part of the time, these services, as they also visit the other buildings. Andrew? Thank you so much. And if you have any questions in reference to our Family Empowerment Center, please don't hesitate and contact us and Maria Horton. And I am looking forward, really looking forward, to collaboration between our Family Empowerment Center and your wonderful city.
Thank you very much. That's a great presentation. Do any of the councilors have a comment or a question? Council President Ockerbo.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. It's really exciting to see, you know, some of the work that you're doing in our community, and excited to hear about openness for more collaboration and things like that in the future, too. I thought it was really a terrific observation and terrific move to move into these workshops with the computer workshops and providing some of the technology skills for families. As, you know, you expressed, like, the learning has moved online in many different formats, and some of the engagement has moved online, and we've really seen that accelerate in the last couple of years. But it's something, as a city, a lot of our public engagement has also moved online. And, you know, thinking about our website, our Let's Talk Wilsonville website that we depend on for surveys and feedback and, you know, these quick polls and stuff like that, and I wonder, I wonder if there's possibility for collaboration there, you know, in kind of helping extend the reach of those surveys. And also, at the beginning of your presentation, you know, you talked about learning from the communities that we all serve. And so there may be things that you've learned from these workshops, too, that we could incorporate to do our work better, too. So I am excited to discuss that more and hear more about that, and, you know, maybe it's something that our staff can be involved in that dialogue and discussion as well, because it seems like there's a lot of possibility there. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I would agree. I look forward to ideas that you may have that could be a collaboration between the city and the Family Empowerment Center. It could be coming to our Citizen Involvement section of our meeting sometime. It could be another presentation like this that includes some of the parents or students once your center gets underway, because I think all of the councilors and our staff, we universally want to have more people knowing that they have access to their city to understand it and have input. So maybe this is one more way for people to connect with their city. Most definitely. Okay. Any other comments?
Great program, great program.
All right. Thank you, Council Lehan. And with that, we'll let you go get ready for the next school day. I'm sure it's coming really soon. And it'll be in person. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So that brings us to our Citizen Input and Community Announcement section of our agenda, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the city council make every effort to respond to questions raised during Citizen's Input before tonight's meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone wanting to provide comments?
No.
Okay. That brings us to councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. And this is a time for the counselors to talk about the work they are doing on behalf of the city, and that's one of the main things we would want to hear about. How are those meetings going and so forth? And what progress and challenges, opportunities do you see? And of course, other meeting announcements and reports you might want to make, starting with Council President Oquervall.
Thank you. Yes, a few things to talk about. Last week, I attended the Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue Annual Award Ceremony, and that was an opportunity to recognize members of their team and honor them for their service and achievement. And it was an online ceremony. I've attended it in the past when it's been in person, but as many things are, it was an online ceremony this year. I also attended the Clackamas County Childcare Task Force Meeting. There is now a new facilitator for that group, Ernest Stevens, and I think that'll be a good move as that group is still kind of getting its footing, and that will be a helpful thing to have the facilitator with us for the next few meetings. And I also wanted to, there's a lot of events in our upcoming meeting sheet, or if you go to the website, you'll see all sorts of things. It feels like things are really getting busy in the city. But one item, which is not on the upcoming meeting sheet, but there is info on our city website, and I wanted to call attention to it, is a photo contest that the city is doing. Looking for photos of Wilsonville that community members have taken, and you can enter your photo. There's many different categories, kind of topics. And I believe Let's Talk Wilsonville has more information, as well as our main city website. It's free to enter. There's prizes that will be awarded. And these photos, I believe, are used for the annual report, for the budget document, which results in a fabulous and engaging budget document, I think. And it's an opportunity to kind of help make some of these communication pieces even more personal and product of our community. So I think it's a great touch to have these community photos wrapped into those prominent communication pieces that we have, and I hope that people will go out there and submit some of their photos or take some of their photos of our beautiful city. So I think the deadline is the 11th, so it'll be coming up soon. Thank you. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Leehan?
Any chance I can share my screen?
Yes.
Too much trouble.
No, we can get you. Hang on a second.
While we're waiting...
There you go.
Oh, good. Great.
Do you see the boat?
Yes.
Okay. That is the Lady Bee. And I was down there with a team of folks. This is at, this is a Burnet vessel down at Wilsonville Concrete. And it's in a crib. It's been out of the water for quite some time, but they have a couple of boats that they're getting rid of. They are past their prime, but so they're thinking of giving this one away to either Willamette Falls and Landings, or their foundation, or perhaps a city park. So I know that Wes Lynn has expressed some interest, and I haven't talked to anybody at Wilsonville Parks, but anyway, that's, it's a 1937 tugboat. It, who knows what we should do with it, or anyone might do with it, or where it might go, but they are offering to move it to the place of your choice. So it was a fun trip to go down and visit it. Let me see if there's some other things you'd like to see of the Lady Bee. And then, so it's sitting on the Willamette in Wilsonville right now. The other one in the background there is, it runs, is the Rainbow. So let me go forward here. There's the Lady Bee. This is the Rainbow, and they don't have anywhere for this one to go, so it will probably, it's quite a bit taller. So it will probably be dismantled, which is a shame, because it's really quite an attractive tugboat. But that's kind of what's happened to stuff in the Upper River as we wait to get the locks open. So that's one thing I've been involved in, along with the Willamette Falls and Landings Coalition, as they look at this and contemplate whether they're, not this one, but the Lady Bee. This one is really too big to go down the road. So anyway, that's kind of what I've been doing. What else was I supposed to talk about? Couple of big airport meetings coming up and that I will be attending. And other than that, I think, oh, and I also attended the Zoom for the new skate park. So you probably remember seeing some pictures of that. Lots of excitement about that. That'll be in Memorial Park and deciding on the particulars of the new skate park, since the old one is gone because it was wooden and reached the end of its useful life. And that's about all I have. Was I supposed to say something else there?
I think that did. I really can't top the two beautiful tugboats that have worked hard all their lives. It's a little bit sad. It makes me think of Mike Mulligan, the steam shovel, the children's book.
Yeah, mostly out of Wilsonville. I mean, these have been tooting out of Wilsonville for a long time.
Well, thank you. Councilor West?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have much to say this week, but I don't know if this was brought up at the last council meeting, but since the last council meeting and this one, our library turned 40. So I want to wish the Wilsonville Library happy birthday. And I know that we're all very proud of the work that our library does, all of the array of programs, the diversity of different services, from the lending library to study spaces for youth to computers. I mean, they just do so much, and it's, we're really lucky to have the library that we do. But that's not the only birthday, because associated with the library, we have now had 10 years with the Imagine Dolly Parton Book Program. Imagine Library, sorry, Imagination Library. So that's another fantastic thing where, you know, children can get, under the age of five, can get a book delivered to their house, I believe it is, every month. Am I right? Every month? I didn't want to say every week, because that's a little, that'd be, that's a lot. But yeah, every month. It's a lot of books for the reading. But yeah, we're really promoting that literacy from, you know, zero to, from the beginning to the end of lifespan. So I think, and, you know, we get the books from zero to five, so we're going to start it young in here in Wilsonville. Yeah, so it's great. It's a really great thing to promote and to highlight, so I just want to take my time to do that. And happy birthday to our library and happy birthday to the Dolly Parton Imagination Reading Program that we have been doing for almost 10 years.
Fabulous. Thank you. Councilor Lindell?
Governor Brown, on March 10, 2022, issued an executive order 20-04 directing state agencies to reduce climate solutions. And you'll recall that we had a presentation at our council meeting about this issue. And so in response, the LCDC, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, is updating the Oregon Transportation Planning Rules and other related administrative rules, and they expect to adopt those at their May 2022 meeting. This was an item on the agenda at the C4 Metro Subcommittee that I serve on and that the mayor attends as well, most meetings. And we are one of the eight, we are included in one of the eight areas in which these rules will have some influence, and not Wilsonville specifically, but because we are considered part of the Portland metro area. So I just wanted to let you know that there are drafts of the transportation and housing rules and a reduction of the greenhouse gas emissions on the oregon.gov website, and you need to go from there to law, laws and rules, and then look for climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking. The C4 Metro Subcommittee didn't take any action on this item, but it's interesting to look at what those draft rules are. This afternoon, each of you received, at the request of the mayor and myself, communication from Mark Ottenad that relates to the, specifically, the issues and concerns regarding implementation of tolling on Interstate 205. And we've both reported on this, these issues numerous times in our comments and mayor's concerns. And the volumes of information are, it's a very, as the mayor would say, it's a very complicated and deep dive into all of those issues that relate to transportation. And what Mark has done in the communication that he sent out is he's done an excellent job of summarizing what the issues and the concerns are. And associated with that is a letter that was sent to the Clackamas County Commission. This, interesting, and I've said this before, that the C4, my Metro Subcommittee, the C4, and all the regional groups in the region responsible for transportation issues have coalesced around and agreed with what the issues and concerns are, which I think is a little unprecedented. And they have communicated, as the mayor has said, with ODOT on numerous occasions, and the issues have not been fully addressed. So what is needed, and, you know, just kind of to pull this together as easily as I can, is that the Regional Transportation Plan and the Metro Transportation Improvement Plan require amendments to be approved by our regional groups in order for tolling to move forward. And the groups have decided that they will wait one month, because they're giving ODOT an opportunity to address the list of concerns and issues. Whether that will happen or not, we'll see at our, probably at our March meetings. And so there has been, ODOT has said, well, if we delay the amendments getting approved, then it's going to delay the improvements on the Abernathy Bridge and funds being released for that. And the groups all said, we're willing to wait a year to get those improvements done, if that's what it takes in order for us to deal with these issues and concerns. So more to come, but if you get an opportunity, the document is a very, it's a very succinct kind of distillation of all of the volumes of documents. As the mayor said, I attended with her the tour, the Greater Portland Inc. Tour at ESS, and that was really fascinating. I was hoping we were going to get a tour of the Twist Bioscience Building as well. They're in construction right now and moving forward with that, but that did not happen. But it was very, very good. But the interesting part is that I've been notified by a Clackamas Community College Board Member, Aaron Woods, that Clackamas Community College is preparing their application for the governor's Future Ready Oregon Competitive Workforce Readiness Grants that are going to go to the educational institutions, I think, and maybe some of the community-based organizations, to specifically address workforce readiness needs, specifically in healthcare, manufacturing, construction, and IT. And what we heard today at ESS was that they are, along with many other businesses in our Wilsonville area, are having difficulty getting qualified employees. Right now, they have 50 jobs that are sitting there, and they can't sell them. Some, most of, well, half of them are professionals in engineering, different areas of engineering, but the other half of them, some are hourly wage jobs and others require some training, some minor training, or just a high school diploma. So I met with the HR Director while we were there and said, Clackamas Community College is looking for needs in our communities. That's what they've asked their board members to do, is to, in your communities, do you have businesses that might be included in our grant? And so Board Member Aaron Woods and myself and Matt Lorenzen, who is our Director of Economic Development, and are going to meet with their Director of HR next week, and we're going to talk about very specific needs. And I would really like to see at least two or three big businesses in our area that are really in need of employees included in these grant funds. So more on that. I attended today a meeting at the Aurora Airport. It was conducted by the National Air Transportation Association, and it was designed for representatives of surrounding governments to learn about air transportation systems. They didn't know very much about Aurora, the Aurora Airport, or our Wilsonville and Aurora Canby area very much, and so they talked mostly about kind of futures of what are happening with regional airports. So there were representatives from the airport, FBO, you know, the businesses there, the city of Aurora was there. I went on behalf of the city of Wilsonville, and there was a representative from the Chamber of Commerce who had just been on the job two days. So she was not, she was not, but they had a conflict, and I think couldn't send someone else. So that was interesting. That was an interesting job. And earlier, Council Leehan talked about the issues with some of the small business sites in Charbonneau, and I just wanted to, if you have not visited the new location of Luxe Cray, they have now updated the old little grocery store that was there, and they are packed every day. They're open and serving until, I think, 4:00 in the afternoon. They have, you know, early morning coffee, and they're serving wine and sandwiches. And if you haven't been there, please go. It's absolutely delightful, and it is the way to be successful, I think, in our small areas. And they have, they have kind of proven their worth, so to speak, and their need And they have, they have kind of proven their, uh, worth, so to speak, and their need to expand, and so they're in a great spot right now, so we're delighted to, for their success. And that is my report.
You're muted, Mayor. Please, very easy.
Yes, that ties back to our conversation about the retail space, um, in the, um, vertical housing, and that particular business started off in a very narrow space, and they have, they have developed a, a good track record. They must be drawing people from quite a distance, and a lot of local people. You see a lot of people there. And I wish that for all their business-
They also do a lot of business outside, you know, ordering stuff, so it's not just people coming there. People order cakes and desserts for all kinds of occasions and functions, so.
We have, we have, that's a great example, and we'll look for more like that. Thank you. So that brings us to our consent agenda, and I would like to ask the city attorney to please read the consent agenda.
Resolution number 2952, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with R.L. Reimers Company for the Corral Creek and River Green Lift Stations Rehabilitation Project. Resolution number 2953, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Braun Construction and Design LLC, DBA Braun Construction, for construction of the 50, 95th Avenue Stormline Repairs Project. Resolution number 2962, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement, contract amendment with StanTech Consulting Services for construction support services for the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project. And finally, minutes of the February 7, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you. Do, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to, to approve the consent agenda as read.
Hold second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes five to zero. And that brings us to a public hearing, and I would like to ask the city man, city attorney to please read the ordinance number 854.
Um, yes, Your Honor, and what I think we could do is I can read both of these ordinances. They're related, and the staff presentation will be the same, um, so that will expedite a little bit, then, but then we'll vote on them separately at the end, if that sounds acceptable to you. Yes?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Ordinance number 854 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Wilsonville annexing approximately 9.74 acres of property located on the west side of Southwest Stafford Road, north of Southwest Frog Pond Lane into the city limits of the City of Wilsonville, Oregon. The land is more particularly described as tax lots 100, 300, and 302, and a portion of Southwest Stafford Road right-of-way section 12D Township 3 South, Range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Clackamas County, Oregon. Uh, ordinance number 855 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Clackamas County Rural Residential Forest Farm 5-acre Zone to the residential neighborhood zone on approximately 8.46 acres on the west side of Southwest Stafford Road, north of Southwest Frog Pond Lane. The land is more particularly described as tax lots 100, 300, and 302, Section 12D Township 3 South, Range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Clackamas County, Oregon. It's a Ventures Properties Inc., uh, deal.
Thank you. So I have a question on procedure on this, uh, Ms. Jacobson. We're going to have a staff report, right?
Yes.
And we're going to vote on these two. Do I open the land, the, the land use hearing, the public hearing format just once, and we vote on both of those in that one hearing?
She can open the public hearing and then comment on both, right?
Yes, you can open the public hearing, and then we can have comments on both, so you can ask for comments on both ordinance. I don't think we have anybody here on either, but, um, that will consolidate what you have to read.
You just have to vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll vote on it separately at the end, yes.
And so, um, would we, would we like to do the staff report first?
Go ahead and open the public hearing, Mayor, and then we can do the staff report.
Sure, yeah. Okay. I will call to order the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance numbers 854, 855 on first reading. Do any of the members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing? No? Hello?
No.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we had audio there. Have all members of the council familiarized themselves with the application?
Yes.
Yes. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the city And I'm asking the city manager if you see anyone wishing to make that statement.
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, based on that issue. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe apply to the decision. Although city council meetings are open to the public, this meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance, in writing, by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in this meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify, or if you would like to notify the city recorder you wish to submit written testimony. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number on your screen, which I'll read, is 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468, and both numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the city recorder, who will provide copies to the council. At this time, I call for staff to present the proposal and list the applicable substantive approval criteria. We'll start with the planning staff presentation, and then comments from the city attorney, and then we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation. And members of the audience who wish to speak before, against, or comment in any way. So we will, um, now hear the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald. City Council President, Mr. Edward Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. Um, I will be presenting ordinance 854 and 855, which is a comprehensive plan, map amendment and zone map, or the annexation and zone map amendment, rather, for the Frog Pond Crossing 29-lot subdivision. As required by statute, I would announce that the applicable review criteria for ordinance 854, um, annexation are included on page two of the staff report in Exhibit A, Attachment Two, and the applicable review criteria for ordinance 855, Zone Map Amendment, are included on page two of the staff report in Exhibit B, Attachment Two. Let me quickly share my screen here. Did that work? Yes. All right. So the subject property is shown on the Frog Pond West Master Plan map, indicated in red on the east side of the Frog Pond West Plan area, west of Stafford Road and north of Southwest Frog Pond Lane. The proposal is for a 29-lot subdivision on, um, on the subject property, which is in line with the Frog Pond West Master Plan that city council previously approved. This master planning process went through a robust public process, and, um, city council is reviewing the annexation and zone map amendment act. The property annexed 9.74 acres of land into the city of Wilsonville. The, this property consists of three tax lots and a portion of the Stafford Road right-of-way. The property is contiguous to land currently in the city and within the urban growth boundary and master plan for residential development. All property owners, um, and a majority of electors have consented in writing to the annexation. As a result, city council is able to move forward with annexing the two properties and adjacent right-of-way. Once again, here, the property is outlined in red, and the city limits as currently existing are shown in the orange. And for the zone map amendment, the proposal rezones the three tax lots, um, which is 8.46 acres from Rural Residential Farm Forest, which is Clackamas County zoning, to RN Residential Neighborhood, City of Wilsonville zoning, which is the designated, um, land use zone for the Frog Pond area. The previously approved applications by DRB consist of the Stage One Master Plan, Stage Two Final Plan, Site Design Review, tentative subdivision plan, and the Type C Free Removal Plan. And there were two discretionary portions of the review that the DRB approved as well, one waiver for open space location and a waiver for minimum street front. I'm now available for any questions you may have for staff.
Any clarifying questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. Um, we've all, um, read through this material, and thank you for going through the results of the DRB hearing. I don't have any questions either, and I'm still not seeing any hands raised. I would like to ask if the city attorney has any comments?
I have received no comments since the Development Review Board hearing, Your, Your Honor.
Thank you. I think we can move to asking the applicant to make their presentation.
This is Maria Miller with AKS Engineering. I am here on behalf of the applicant, and, um, we were not planning on making a presentation. I'd like to thank Philip for his presentation. We agree with the information presented. Um, we don't have anything to add to this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miller.
That brings us to, um, I'd like to ask, uh, the city manager to let us know if there are any members of the audience who wish to speak for or against or comment in any way.
We don't have, we don't have anyone wishing to speak, Mayor.
And so that, um, tells me we probably don't have a rebuttal from the applicants. I'm just asking as a matter of the formal procedure.
That is correct. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Hearing, no more questions. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, move.
Um, we've received a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Oh, second, yes.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 I declare the public hearing closed.
Your Honor, I would move to adopt ordinance number 854 on first reading.
Your Honor, all second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Mayor, you, you might, just formality, ask if there's any discussion.
Let me back up. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Hearing, no further discussion, um, so that's, that's what I was going to do just a minute there.
Your Honor, I would move to, uh, adopt ordinance number 855 on first reading.
Hold second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, um, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero on first reading. I will now move to the city, um, city manager's business.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Legal business.
So I do have some exciting legal business tonight, well, relatively speaking. This week, we received payment, uh, payment in full of two judgments in court cases we won, the first being in the Aurora Airport case and the second being in the Wilsonville Subaru case. Well, neither of those judgments is certainly going to make us rich. They are the milestones indicating that both cases are finally completed after all of this time, and the city was victorious.
Well, that is, that is really great news. And was that this week on the, um, Aurora Airport?
Yes, that we got paid, yes. And, and unfortunately-
Can you elaborate, can you elaborate on, on exactly what that means?
Sure.
What that entails?
Sure. We don't, we're, we can't get attorney fees, but we can recover court costs, and although we do recover court costs, and it was several hundred dollars, most of it we have to pay back to the state court because we don't pay filing fees, so it's more symbolic than anything else. But it was nice to get those judgment awards from both courts, both the Circuit Court and the Court of Appeals.
Well, it makes for a very good wrap-up to the month of February.
It does.
Thank you, um, Ms. Jacobson. That's very good news. And with that, I think we have concluded our meeting, and that our meeting is hereby adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.